This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the Elpena City Council meeting of January 16, 2024. Please rise. Oh, sorry.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Noah?
Here.
Councilmember Walchak?
Please rise for the part.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved. Board.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
For Noah?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I have a modification to add to the agenda. So in... Oh, this is on the consent. Never mind. Approval of the minutes of regular session, January 2nd, 2024. Any issues, concerns?
Are we modifying the agenda then to add that to the agenda?
We should probably do that first on the agenda.
Yeah.
I didn't see that, so. I move that motion to add this to the consent agenda, the recognition of Heather Renssberry Memorial Foundation as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license for an event to be held in the city of Elpena.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mitchum?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes. Now, were there any questions or concerns with the minutes of January 2nd? None? Okay. So we're going to move on to public comment. Citizens appearing before the city council on an agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a city council meeting for citizens to address the council. At tonight's meeting, the council will decide on several important issues. Sometimes you may disagree. In council chambers, we must follow etiquette and be civil and respectful to everyone. If you address the council, speak to us and do not address the audience. There is no clapping, cheering, or yelling for anyone who speaks at the podium or online. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. If you are online and want to address council, we will move to you after everyone in chambers has an opportunity to speak. Please raise your hand and state your name and address for our records. To avoid interruptions, please silence your phone, and thank you in advance for your cooperation. So if anyone in the room has public comment, please come to the podium. None? Steve, any online? Okay. So moving on, we have the consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $354,000... $354,373.56 and authorize Mayor Protem and Clerk Soick to sign the warrant. B, approval of the cemetery deed number 0295 by and between the city of Elpena and Don Lynn Hernandez in the amount of $745 for Block 40, Lot 268, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care and authorize Mayor Protem Johnson and Clerk Soick to authorize said deed. And C is recognition of Heather Renssberry Memorial Foundation as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license for an event to be held in the city of Elpena.
I move we approve the consent agenda. Board.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walchak?
Yes.
Your Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're down to announcements. Presentations. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm jumping over the head. Presentations. A is Employee of the Quarter Kathy Hines, our Human Resource Director and Chief...
Bobby Edmonds. So as you know, but not everybody here knows, this program is relatively new for us, the Employee of the Quarter. This is only the second presentation, and it's a program that we kind of have expanded upon our shout-out program of those that are recognized for really making this a great work environment, but somebody that's gone above and beyond to make the entire community better. And we had two nominees, and one is Shannon Smolinski, and unfortunately, she's not here tonight, but she is our division head over at our DPW, coming from the Engineering Department, most recently as the assistant or engineering assistant and also the harbor master, and she's had her hands full there, but was ready for a new challenge. And the folks that are nominated are nominated for positive work relationships, upbeat attitude. They rally around the vision and values of the city. They're dedicated. They have a dedicated work ethic, proven methods of improving efficiency in the workplace, exceptional commitment to projects and tasks going above and beyond the requirements of their position, and these people are goal-oriented and they're team players and enthusiastic. And having the honor to work both with Shannon and our other nominee Doug Keough, I can tell you, these people are exactly like that, and they're an actual... They're fun to work with, and they're easy to talk to. You know if you need something, that you can contact these individuals, and they're going to have your back, and it makes you want to have theirs as well. So our winner, and it's going to be presented by the chief, is Doug Keough, and Rob has more to tell you of why Doug was selected.
Thank you and good evening. I can tell you, I wouldn't want to make that choice because they were both very good candidates. So I nominated firefighter/paramedic Doug Keough for Employee of the Quarter as he's been one of our standout employees. He's one who continues to advance himself and the department personally and professionally. Doug serves in many roles within the department and has taken this opportunity to aid in advancing himself, his peers, and the department to provide high-quality service our community expects from its fire and EMS department. Doug serves as one of the field training officers for new hires assigned to his shift. This entails assisting them with becoming good at their new role within the organization, a constant resource for teaching them the expectations and tasks they are to master as a new hire within our department. He also is one of our EMS supply coordinators, ensuring that EMS supplies, equipment, and inventory is adequate to ensure the crew's needs for providing care in the field. Doug also serves as the County Training Chair for Elpena County, acting as a liaison between Elpena County Fire Chiefs, Elpena Community College, and the Michigan Bureau of Fire Services for county-funded training by the state of Michigan. With this role, he is responsible for the county fire training academies held at ACC, many courses held for firefighter development and planning for the future fire department training needs to local departments. Doug continues to advance his professional qualifications as well. He's a Critical Care Paramedic Instructor Coordinator and a Fire Instructor 1 and 2 through the Bureau of Fire Services. He is also a Fire Officer 1 Instructor. The Fire Officer 2 Instructor and Fire Officer 1 Instructor course completions he did of his own motivation, and both will open the ability to train Elpena City fire personnel to increase their opportunities towards officer certification for promotional purposes in the department. He is our internal fire instructor as well, helping to plan and deliver training topics to ensure our crew's readiness. Doug is very involved in the Elpena County MFR Education Program as an instructor in the Medical First Responder, EMT, and Paramedic Initial Education programs. He also assists in the delivery of continuing education courses to the area first responder agencies. Doug continues to grow within our department and represents our "excellence in service" unquote focus to providing customer service in its highest regard. Doug is respectful of his coworkers and looks to be a good team member in his daily interactions. When projects need to be handled, Doug is often one to volunteer and take them on. His willingness to offer a hand and help others is natural for him. In addition to being a great representation of our department, Doug has the privilege of being a husband and a father to his family while balancing his dedication to the Elpena City Fire Department and the public safety community. The support and understanding that his family has of the job and Doug's commitment is also commendable and appreciated. I believe that Doug Keough exceeds the expectations of the department and should be honored as the Employee of the Quarter based on his service and dedication to his responsibilities as a city employee. And at this time, I'd like to congratulate Doug on being named Employee of the Quarter and have him come forward. We have a little plaque for you, Doug. I'm going to read it so everybody can see what it says. It says, honoring Doug Keough, firefighter/paramedic IC, Employee of the Quarter, October to December 2023. The city of Elpena would like to thank you for your hard work and dedication, as well as your consistent willingness to go above and beyond your duties. You are appreciated for pushing the bar higher and achieving what you set out to do. You're an inspiration to your coworkers and the entire team at the city of Elpena. Congratulations on your continued success in your position and all you set out to achieve.
Thank you.
Can you... I want you with him, please.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I do. Okay, now look at me.
Right into the photo.
I did.
Thank you. Up to our annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 20... June 30th, 2023, and Chelsea McConnell from Strickland's line is here.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to report on the fiscal year 2023 audit. So just a little bit about an audit. So at the conclusion of an audit, we opine on whether we believe the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. And I always like to point out that although audit is a very high level and the highest level of assurance that you can have of assurance in an attestation engagement, it's not absolute assurance. And the city's financial statements are required to comply with generally accepted accounting principles, and our audit is required to be conducted under generally accepted auditing standards as well as governmental auditing standards. So the city has an annual comprehensive financial report, and that is a... That contains a lot more than just a regular governmental report. There's a lot more that goes into it, and I am pleased to report that the city was awarded a certificate of achievement of excellence for financial reporting for the 29th consecutive year, and that was beginning 1994 through 2022, and that is a very prestigious and national award, and there is a lot of work that goes into it. So Anna and Leland worked really hard to be able to get that for the city. Just a very brief summary about the report design. So first you have your introductory section, followed by the independent auditor's report, and then you have management's discussion and analysis, which is required supplementary information. Next is the basic financial statements, which is going to contain your government-wide financial statements, your fund financial statements, and then those note disclosures to the statements. Next, you have the rest of your required supplementary information. So required supplementary information, or RSI, is required by the Government Accounting Standards Board, but however, it's not actually part of the basic financial statements, but it is required to be part of this report. And the rest of that is going to be your budgetary comparison schedules on your major funds, as well as required pension and OPEB or other post-employment benefit schedules. Next is your supplementary information. So this section is not required, but it actually seems to have a lot of the most useful statements in it to the users of the financial statements. There are statements back there that are a lot more detailed and comparative. There's non-major governmental fund combining statements and individual fund statements. And last is the statistical section. The statistical section is considered other information, and it is required in an annual comprehensive financial report. So the next thing I'm going to go over is a letter that wouldn't be bound within the report, or if you're looking at a PDF copy, it's going to be towards the end of that. And that letter is titled Communication of Those Charged with Governance at the Conclusion of the Audit. So those charged with governance is you, city council. And there's just a couple key items in this letter I like to point out. One, management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies, and as well as we did implement GASB statement number 96, which is subscription-based information technology arrangements, also known as SPITAS, as of July 1, 2022. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. In addition, there are some estimates that are required to have statements that comply with generally accepted accounting principles. There are certain numbers that you know on any given day and can reconcile, such as cash, and then there's estimates that are required to be made by management, and those estimates need to be reasonable, and some of those estimates are considered significant to the financial statements. A couple of those significant estimates are your pension and OPEB liabilities, as well as the related deferred inflows and outflows. Those are significant numbers, and they're based on many different assumptions and actuarial evaluations, I mean mortality rates, inflation, future expected rate of return on planned assets. There are so many assumptions that go into those calculations. And I am pleased to report that we did not have any difficulties in performing our audit, nor did we have any disagreements with management. So next, the independent auditor's report. You can find that full report on pages 31 and 33 through 33 of the bound copy. You were issued an unmodified opinion. That is the best type of opinion you can be issued, and it means that we do believe the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. Materiality is really a concept that auditors utilize, and we also make various risk and internal control assessments, and then we can plan and perform our audit. During that audit process, we gather audit evidence that is sufficient and appropriate to base our audit opinion on. And risks can really change from audit to audit. It can depend. Sometimes a new standard could create a high-risk area. Sometimes, you know, it's a significant calculation. So one of those areas that was considered a riskier area in the audit was the GASB statement number 68 and 75, the pension and OPEB calculations, because as I said, those are very complex calculations, and those numbers are significant material to your financial statements. In addition, revenue is considered a high-risk area. It would be very rare that you would ever have an audit where just revenue isn't considered high-risk. It's pretty much always going to be considered high-risk in an audit. So on the next slide, I have just a summarized comparative statement of financial position for the governmental activities. So this is going to be Doug's government-wide statements, which are on the full accrual basis of accounting, very similar to a private sector company. That is different from your fund statements. Your fund statements are on that modified accrual basis of accounting and really focuses on how money flows in and out and what's available for spending at year-end. So overall, just taking a look at what happened between fiscal year '22 and '23, assets increased about 1.2 million, and this was primarily due to current assets increasing 1.1 million. The most significant reason that led to that increase was your cash and cash equivalents and investments in aggregate increased about $800,000. In addition, you'll see both your deferred outflows and deferred inflows of resources both decreased about $550,000 and $450,000 respectively, and that was mainly due to those GASB 68 and 75 calculations. There was also an increase in liabilities of about $1.1 million. That increase was primarily a result of net pension liability increasing $1 million. And then there were also some leases for which the city is the leasee for, and those were recognized under GASB statement number 87. I'm going to touch on them a little bit more, but that increased liabilities about $350,000 from 2022. But overall, net position was very, very consistent with 2022, seeing a very slight increase of just under $4,000. So next is same thing, summarized comparative statement of activities for those governmental activities. So you'll see both revenues and expenses increase between the fiscal years. There were three main reasons that led to the increase in revenues. Your investment earnings increased compared to the prior year, 2022. The market was down. It rebounded, and so you saw that increase in revenue for that investment return. Also, capital grants increased, and that was primarily due to a grant that you received through MDOT for a major street in the city. And also, property tax revenue increased, and that's just due to taxable values increasing overall. The increase in expenses was actually primarily a result of that increase in the pension liability, which led to an additional $1.5 million of expenses being recognized in these government-wide financial statements that wouldn't be recognized in the fund statements. So moving on to just looking at the fund statements a little bit. So you'll see the full fund statements on pages 52 to 57, and those are going to show all of your major funds, and there'll be one aggregate column for your non-major governmental funds. So if you want to see the detail of those non-major governmental funds, you have to go to that supplementary information section, and there you'll see those detailed statements. Overall, the general fund had a healthy fiscal year and ended the year with an increase in fund balance. The unassigned portion of fund balance increased about $470,000 in the general fund, and there's also just some key ratios to measure the general fund's health. So the number... It's always really important, I think, to look at how many days of expenditures and other financing uses do you have in that unassigned fund balance? And so you'll see that increase slightly. So in 2022, you were at 41%. It increased 2% to 43% at the end of 2023, and that obviously led to the number of days of expenditures in that unassigned fund balance increasing from 150 days to 156 days. And the Government Finance Officers Association recommends no less than 60 days for those financial measures, so you exceeded that expectation. So GASB statement number six, SPITAS, I am just going to briefly go over them. The city didn't have any material SPITAS to recognize for June 30th, 2023, so we had to go through and analyze, and the city had to... Everyone had to evaluate all of these subscription-based information technology arrangements, which are going to deal with those licenses that you have to use someone else's software. And so GASB recognized that more and more governments are using those licenses, and so that generated this new standard by them. So on page 80, you'll see some disclosures about some significant accounting policies in relation to the SPITAS. This standard is very similar to GASB 87 leases, where you record a right-of-use asset, and then you have also a liability that goes along with that on those government-wide statements. That would... If you had any, it would be initially measured at the present value of the subscription payments expected to be made over the subscription term. So GASB statement number 87. So this is the first year that... This was just implemented last year in fiscal year 2022, and the city had a couple leases where you were the leasor, and those were recognized under the standard. However, you didn't have any that you were the leasee for, so this is the first year that you had any leases to recognize as a leasee under this new standard. And so you do have several vehicles with one vendor that are considered leases under GASB statement 87, so that resulted in that right-of-use vehicles being recognized, as well as lease liabilities only on the government-wide financial statements. And you can also find further note disclosures on this. So Note 1 added some additional accounting policies in relation to these, and then you will also see them in Note 6, your Capital Asset Note, as the right-of-use of vehicles, and then also on the Long-Term Debt Note 7, you'll see them recognized as debt, and you'll also see a schedule of those expected payments to be made in the future. Business-type activities and enterprise funds, those are going to be your sewer and water funds. So overall, the sewer fund had an increase in net position of just over $600,000. And operating revenue and expenses, they were pretty consistent with the prior year. They both had slight increases of about $93,000 and $53,000 respectively, and then you saw your non-operating revenue and expenses increase about $89,000, and that primarily, again, was due to that investment income increasing over the prior year, about $67,000. And then the water fund had an overall increase in net position of about $1.6 million. Operating revenues increased about $236,000, and that was primarily due to just a slight increase in usage and a slight increase in charges to customers. Operating expenses increased about $150,000 over the prior year in the water fund, and that was just due to a slight increase in the cost of production, as well as repairs and maintenances. And then again, we saw the non-operating revenue and expenses increase net of about $88,000, and $84,000 of that was related to the investment income. So the last letter that is also not found in the report has a very long title. It has to do with the report on internal controls, and this communication is required under governmental auditing standards. So internal controls over financial reporting, we consider them during our audit for designing and planning our audit. However, we don't express an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. We don't audit the internal controls, so it's just really important to remember, there could be deficiencies in that system of internal controls that we did not identify because we looked at that, the internal controls, for a very limited scope for our audit. However, if we had identified any, we would be required to report those. I am pleased to say we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. There was one compliance finding, you'll see, and that really was due to a budget overage. So as I mentioned, there was the MDOT grant in the Major Street Fund. There was an adjustment that was done after year-end. After year-end, it's too late to amend your budget, so you couldn't go back and amend it once that adjustment was identified, and that... It increased both your revenue and expenses by the same amount. So overall, there was no net difference in that fund from the adjustment. However, it just... It was material, and so it did have to be reported as a compliance finding, but I do think it's noteworthy just to point out, it doesn't... It's not a systematic budget issue. And then just a couple upcoming accounting items. So there are a couple more standards that will be implemented over the next couple of years, and those are disclosed in Note 22. I'm not going to go over those, but I did just want... Do just want to point out that the city could possibly be subject to a single audit for fiscal year 2024. The only reason I'm saying that is because I know there's the large $6 million grant in the water fund, and as of June 30th, 2023, you had received $3 million of that. However, you hadn't expended any of it. For anyone who's not familiar with the threshold of what would trigger a single audit, if you expend $750,000 or more in federal funds in one fiscal year, then you are required to have that single audit. So with that large... Between that large grant, and then also you still had about $950,000 of ARPA funds left to utilize at year-end. If you do expend $750,000, just keep in mind, you will have to go through a single audit as well. So with that being said, I just want to thank Anna and her team. They do a lot for us in the audit and always prioritize getting us everything we need, and I know we request a lot and ask a lot of questions, so we really appreciate it. And they're both... Anna and Leland are great to work with, and everybody down in the accounting department. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions anyone might have.
Does anyone have questions?
One for clarification. You mentioned single audit.
Mm-hmm.
And their single audits, so they would be done separately if such the money were spent? So single audit for one, and then single audit for the other?
So you'll still... So you'll still have your regular audit will still be required. And then what the single audit is, is it's really kind of like you identify something called major funds, and then you kind of audit that, those major funds, and you have to do a SEFA, Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, and then that all has to be submitted to the federal clearinghouse. So it's kind of done... A lot of times, it's done along with, like, the audit at the same time as the audit. It's not always issued at the same time, and a lot of times, it can be issued in a separate report. Sometimes it can be in the same report. But it is just like another... It's more like a compliance audit. Yeah, thanks. You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I just got a question about calculating the unassigned fund balance. So this year, we used $40,583. That's a negative number, and that got taken from the expenditures. I thought in the past, it was transfers out was only used in the expenditures. I don't know. So the number that I came up with is a little bit higher than...
Oh, okay. I see everything. Let me... Oh, do you have it?
So when I took it, I took this and I got 46%, but I think you have this.
Oh, I may have picked up the wrong number in it, so it very well could be 46. Did I have 43?
Uh, yes.
43%? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, very cool. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Anna, thank you too. You do a wonderful job every single year.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I move we receive and file.
Second.
Carol, was that your second?
That was my second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is the Huron Humane Society Semiannual Report, and Mary Egan is here too.
Having me opening up for Mike Mahler again. I feel like the band is back together.
Great.
Loves that. I know, yes. It's lovely to be here to speak to you tonight. Let me start by thanking the City of Alpena for not only valuing the work of the Huron Humane Society in spirit by also continuing to maintain a service contract with HHS to house, treat, and care for dogs and cats brought to the shelter in the City of Alpena. We at HHS are very proud to be Alpena's No Kill Animal Shelter, serving the community for 42 years now. It's an honor to be in partnership with the city and it's something that we never take for granted. So we had a lot of animals this year. Intake and adoption numbers for the Huron Humane Society, just from the City of Alpena, 278 felines, 23 canines, that's 301 animals. Now, it's important to note that animals from the City of Alpena are given priority admission to the Huron Humane Society because of the service contract that we have with the city. This is especially important to citizens during kitten season. Now, if folks don't know about kitten season, every spring and summer, during the winter, we'll just say cats are staying warm in creative ways. And we get a lot of kittens, a lot of kittens. So kitten season will be coming before we know it. And because of the service contract with the City of Alpena, Alpena city citizens, their cats get a first admission to the Huron Humane Society. They can jump cats from other geographic areas, not physically, that we don't like cat fights. Anyway, the cat waiting list is, is a, is very long sometimes. And the citizens really appreciate being that, getting that priority admission. 189 kittens from the city were taken in by HHS this year. Total of 228 animals came to HHS from other jurisdictions in Alpena County. Total dog and cat intake in 2023 was 529 animals from all jurisdictions. So the outcome, adoptions, 458 cats, 30 dogs were adopted last year for a total of 488 animals adopted. We had 10 animals returned to owner. The average length of stay for dogs at HHS, only four days. They don't stay long. And the average length of stay for cats at HHS is 41 days before being adopted. In 2023, the shelter took in 343,652.78 and had expenses of 339,956.73. Inflation and increase in the number of sick animals brought to us needing veterinary care and an inability to get workers without raising our rate of pay were challenges for the society last year. All those issues factor into the cost of taking care of each of the animals that came through the shelter in 2023. And that averaged $642.64 per animal. So we invested in the structural health of HHS, not just in the health of the animals. We started refurbishing the front entryway, and that's a project that's almost done. We purchased a new washer and dryer. You can imagine the 529 animals, that's 529 beds every day that we clean and wash. We go through washers and dryers very quickly. We purchased more kennels to make room for more cats because of the increased need in 2023. And we invested in a newer SUV, which is used to transport animals to vet visits and take donated bottles to the store to recycle. We desperately need those returnable bottles and cans to help us raise money to care for the animals. So please drop yours off any time of the day or night outside the Huron Humane Society. We will gratefully take them back. And think of you fondly when we're using that money to take care of the animals. Having demonstrated our continued commitment to fiscal, ethical, and humane responsibility in action over the past year, the Huron Humane Society respectfully asks for the renewal of our current service contract with the City of Alpena. If HHS were to bill the city, the $642.64 that it costs us to care for each of the 301 animals HHS took in just from the City of Alpena in 2023, the bill would be more than $193,400. It's important to note that $649 per animal includes testing for common infectious diseases, flea and tick treatments and preventatives, heartworm preventatives, all standard age-appropriate vaccinations, socialization, safe, clean, and warm housing. We have care and feeding for sometimes months at a time, as is the case with newborn kittens and puppies who must be at least eight weeks old to go home to their families. Spay neuter surgery performed by Alpena County Veterinary Clinics, any needed veterinary care while the animals at the shelter. And our animals get a lot of needed veterinary care. In 2023, we spent $66,577.25 at the two veterinary clinics in town that service HHS animals. And it's important to note that is with discounts. If an average citizen had to pay that, they would be paying more. The services that HHS can provide because of generous donors and funding from our service contract with the city benefit public health for animals and humans alike. We are heartened that with the support of the City of Alpena, 301 city animals who have resided at our shelter within the city limits this year have been tested, treated, vaccinated, and either have been or will be surgically sterilized, which will pay huge dividends in the community for years to come. The Huron Humane Society requests $22,500 from the City of Alpena to help cover a portion of the cost incurred by HHS in caring for the animals of city residents. This is the same amount that we requested last year despite our costs going up in 2023 because we realized times are tough for everyone. In awarding HHS the $22,500 in, in services this year, the city is covering $74.75 of that $642 that costs HHS to care for each of the 301 animals the society took from city residents last year. That $74.75 barely pays for the first round of testing, vaccines, and preventative treatment each animal receives. It doesn't cover spay neuter services, veterinary care, or the cost to employ professional animal care technicians to humanely and, and really personally care for the homeless companion animals that residents of Alpena, the society, the residents of Alpena ultimately adopt. The society's insurance is another cost, shelter maintenance, vehicle, or utility cost. To put that further into perspective, the average cat spends 41 days at HHS before being adopted, as I said earlier. That works out to about $15.67 a day. Funding from the city covers less than five days of care per cat. The average length of stay for a dog at HHS, four days. That means it costs about $136.73 per day to care for a dog. Funding from the city covers less than half a day of care for a dog at the Huron Humane Society. So that $22,500, it's a pretty good bargain for the City of Alpena, and we will put that money to responsible use. We appreciate your consideration of our request for the renewal of our service contract. And we thank you for valuing humane best practices for managing the homeless, unwanted, neglected, and abused animal problem in the City of Alpena. We are truly appreciative of our relationship with the city and salute you for your commitment to the health and well-being of the domestic animal population of the city. We would love to show you around the shelter. We really mean that. Anytime it's convenient for you. The Huron Humane Society is open Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and you are welcome anytime. And that goes to anybody in the audience as well. We love having people visit. And if you are having a bad day and you need a pick-me-up, come socialize kittens for us. It, it helps you and it helps the kittens immensely. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
To file and receive?
I move to receive and file.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Next up is Target Semiannual Report, Mike Mahler. She warmed us up.
I'm guessing you're all presentation doubted by now, fourth and, fourth in line here. So I know you've probably, in spite of the heavy volume of reading you had for this meeting tonight, I'm assuming you've all read my seven-page report. So I am not going to read it to you. I'm simply going to point out just a couple of things I think are worthy of at least my attention and yours tonight. First thing, since last time I was here, we, as part of our kind of strategic changes to our organization, we added a third person. So a year ago, we brought on a second person. That was Lenny Avery to focus on grants, grant pursuit, research, and, and, and housing development. And now we've added another person to focus on small businesses. As a single-person shop, Target was not really equipped to handle the period of needs that a community like this has to do a really good job. I was a generalist, so now we're bringing in, I'm going to call subject matter experts to kind of help us. So the small business person started for us at the end of December. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as I get a little deeper into the report here. We did apply for a small business hub grant. We had made the decision strategically to pursue small business supports in the community about the same time the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, announced this program to support a hub for small business, small businesses across the state. Target Alpena decided, since we were heading down that path anyway, to pursue that grant. And lo and behold, we were successful. There were 70 applications filed statewide, 27 received it. We were one of the 27. We sought 2.149 million and got 2.149 million. So great news for, great news for Alpena, great news for Presqueal. Through this program, we're going to service five counties. And so we're, we took the Lake Shore Counties, from Sheboygan to the north, Hayasco to the south, and the other three lake counties, including Alpena, in between them. So we're still more, you know, right now, my, my mission is to kind of just get the word out that there's, there's small business support coming. When I say support, I mean real dollars. We're going to have dollars to spend to help small businesses get better, get more efficient, get their voices heard greater and louder, more meaningful way. Also, longer term, we want to also kind of create a smart zone in this region. Because if you look at the state of Michigan, there's no smart zones in northeast Michigan at all. And we need one. And to me, Target's the right place. And so over the longer term, we're going to be focused on figuring out where that might make the most sense, what to pursue. Kind of jumping into maybe some of the more granular elements in my report here. The APC site, everybody is always interested in what's happening with that site. I was here a year ago talking about we had a developer who was wanting to put a four-story, 66-apartment unit, mixed-use, commercial, lower-level project on that site. We applied for a grant for that project and we failed, unfortunately. MEDC still loves that project and is still committed to trying to find a way to make it happen. And so we're still working with the developer. They, they still have, are committed to trying to get this project built on that site. But without grant support, it will not happen. Even with grant support, it's still going to be a lot of work to make it happen. That's a 25-minute project that we badly need. And so the, the dollars of support that we get are going to have to be somewhat meaningful to help bring that project to reality. And so, but we're still working on it. With respect to, one of the big new items that Evan touched on here is, here, it's been a little over a week, right after the first of the year. We, Lenny Avery brought this to our attention, an opportunity through a grant pursuit to demolish Fletcher Paper. We know that for a lot of reasons, it'd be great to take that building down. And we can't develop that property until that building gets out of the way. And so we had, with city help and county help, we, we put together a pretty compelling business case for supporting this. We pursued $2.6 million grant. The owner of the building will put in another half a million dollars to bring it down. It's going to be a selective demolition, not just, not just a wrecking while knocking it to the ground. There are elements of that building that they would like to leave up to be part of the redevelopment of that project and that property. That is a very historic building that kind of helped shape this community. And so there's a recognition by the property owner, Mr. Concheck, to make sure that we keep a portion of that for redevelopment or into the redevelopment. So anyway, we'll know this winter if we are successful with that grant. And if we get it, it'll be torn down this year. At least that's the plan. So very exciting. Former Habitat site, you know, I was here a year and a half ago celebrating our success in getting a grant to build that project. And, and the developer just couldn't make the math work and has now stepped away. And that's been my biggest disappointment since I've been in this role for years, that their project is not going to come to life in spite of a $5 million grant. And so the MEDC has reeled that grant back in. And so the developer says that they would sell the property to somebody else who wants to develop. They won't stand in the way. If someone's got an idea for a project and needs a site approximately that size, they would, they would sell it in a moment to help facilitate that project, whatever it might be. So yeah, I'm sad that that didn't come to pass. With respect to city property north of town, you know, we've had, we've had, we've had action. But it's interesting. Over the, over, last Friday, after I did this report, I met with somebody who had interest in a parcel of property over there. I sent them information over the weekend. He called me today, and I think he's going to put together a purchase agreement to acquire a piece of property over in the city property. I won't say too much until, because it's, until we have a purchase agreement. We don't have one. But anyway, I just want to give you a heads up that I think you're going to have a viable offer coming your way on a piece of property over there. With respect to activity around the area here, you know, things are rolling along. Hampton's going, all these is going up. I understand Marshall has their busiest first week ever. It's just hard for me to imagine a company the size of that saying that they had their best first week in Alpena, but that's what I heard from the developer. So they were very happy with how things went with that grand opening. I was involved with it in the fall with the groundbreaking at CRTC. They're adding a fifth-generation hangar out there, which is, helps keep this Air National Guard base viable into the future. And so I'm really grateful to see Senator Peter's support for that project. So that's underway. And then I also mentioned PACE, the Program for All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly. They were going to be the main tenant for the Habitat Site Building and couldn't make it work. And so they punted to another location. And so they're looking at either Ripley Street Station or the former Neiman Store in Thunder Bay Shopping Center. So either way, if, if they're coming to town and they tell me they're committed to being here and they need to be here by the end of this year, they need 25,000 to 28,000 square feet approximately. So there'll be one of these shopping centers in, in south end of town that's going to get some love if they sign a lease agreement. So I think that'd be a win for the south side. I won't get involved in recapping the grants, but we've been pretty busy in that regard. Housing, a lot of talk about it, but no action. We definitely need housing here. And so we have a lot of headwinds that we're facing that are, you know, putting up roadblocks to getting something built here. Not the least of which is just, you know, shortages of, of tradesmen in trade, tradecraft in this community. They're all very busy right now. So anyway, still working on that. And I guess with that, I promise I keep it brief and just hit the tip of the waves. So any questions or thoughts you'd like to share?
No, I'm just proud to have served with you over the last few years and on the Economic Development Committee. And I would just say, as, as many times as we've had disappointments, we've had a lot of victories too. And a lot of that is because of your leadership, Mike. So I just want you to know that. I really appreciate everything you've done for us over the last four years as well.
Well, thank you for that. I, I love what I do. This is a great, this is a great assignment. And so I'm grateful to be in a position to, to do this. And I thank you for your support. Obviously, without the city's financial support, you know, this work wouldn't be getting done here. So thank you for that and have a great rest of the evening, okay?
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file.
So move.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
And Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
So we have a proclamation, Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week of January 22nd, 2024. So whereas the Friends of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary was established October 2010 to support the mission of the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary to identify, protect, conserve, and enhance the natural and maritime heritage resources, values, and qualities of the National Marine Sanctuary system for this and future generations throughout the nation. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival brought to the residents of Alpena through a joint effort of the International Ocean Film Festival and the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary hopes to bring a larger ocean awareness and environment for interactive learning and inspiration for local filmmakers. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival will utilize the powerful form of film to communicate ocean and Great Lakes and bring cultural events to Alpena and the surrounding communities to inspire a shared vision of conservation of ocean and Great Lakes environments through stunning, sometimes controversial, and always conversation-starting films. And whereas the Great Lake region often considers the first- And whereas the Great Lake Region, often considered the third coast, is a vital part of global waterways, thus making global issues our issue too. And whereas the Thunder Bay International Film Festival explores water issues through some of the most impressive oceans and Great Lake films from around the world, complemented by social events, educational opportunities, and discussion with award-winning nationally-recognized filmmakers. Now, therefore, I, Cindy Johnson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor Protem of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of January 22, 2024, Thunder Bay International Film Festival Week. And. Schultz.
All right. On January 9, 2024, the city received an open bid to provide the necessary dumpsters, emptying of dumpsters and emptying of trash cans, and the supply of can liners to areas throughout the city. Bid documents were sent to three vendors, as well as posted on the city's website, with one bid received as follows up there. And one, one company asked for the old bid tabs to see if they could compete, and then they declined to bid. They actually contacted us and told us that they would not be bidding. And the other company had indicated that they, they don't do the can part of it. They can only do the dumpsters. So they elected not to bid as well. So after reviewing the proposed prices from GFL Environmental and the service they have provided for the city for the previous contract, I'm recommending that we, we hire them, and that suggested motion is there. This would be a three-year contract with the option to award for one more year if we decide we like the prices between, between both of us.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Steve, if I may, GFL, you know, for the, for this service, you said there was another company that only provides dumpster service here in, in the city.
Yeah.
Purchased a lot of the other local companies here.
Yeah.
Is there anyone even left that would locally provide the service beyond them?
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, we, the other, I, I don't know if it was, it was, was it the other disposal, Alpena disposal, I think was the ones that told us that they couldn't, they couldn't do the, the cans part of it. They would do the dumpsters, but they weren't available to do the can part of it. So. Discount disposal, there you go, yeah, yeah.
Curious about that. Does it, no, I don't really.
Yeah, we, we, we're not sure. That's why we put them on the website too, in case anybody was out there. But yeah, I mean, basically, the local is, is the GFL right now is the, basically, the only option we have to do all services.
No other questions?
No other questions? In a motion?
Yep. I move that we award the contract to GFL Environmental for the unit prices provided for a three-year period with the possibility of a one-year contract renewal.
Support.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to.
Next agenda item is portable toilet rental and service contract, and Steve again.
All right. On January 9, 2024, the city received an open bid to provide service, to provide and service portable toilets at various locations throughout the city and during city special events. Bid documents were sent to three vendors and posted on the city's website with two bids received that are listed there and on here, because I didn't share the screen yet, so. But Hall Servall was, was the low bid, and Elcona Septic Service, they, we reached out to them today, and they did not respond. So we don't know, don't know exactly why they didn't bid, but I have a feeling it's more of a local thing. They're not local, and these two are, and I don't think they felt that they, they might not be able to beat them. So, but Hall Servall's been our provider for quite a few years, and they've done a great job for us, and, and they responded, the call-ins, the emergencies, and they've just, they've done good for us. So I have the motion there to award it to them.
So Mike, there is your second bid.
There's my second bid. My question was, is just, you know, looking at the bids.
Pena Septic.
And I'm very happy we have two, because I always feel we're better when we have a couple of them. But they're way out of line compared to each other. I don't know this, and I was going to ask the question if the other company is local as well, or they were having to travel, you know, a bigger distance, just to try to understand that a little bit.
I.
Got a response.
I didn't, I didn't get a response on, on the, the price difference. I just know that, that Hall's has been doing it for a while, and I think their comfort level with our, with what we need and how they, how they are able to service us, I think there was just, that comfort level shows up in the numbers, I think.
And so the other vendors from Hubbard Lake.
Alpena Septic. Yeah.
I move we award the contract to supply and service the portable toilets throughout the city to Hall's Servall as the ASBID unit prices for years 24, 25, 26, with the possibility of a one-year contract extension if both parties can agree on pricing.
Support.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion to.
So next up, we have Recreation Plan Resolution with.
Hey. Hi. So you're familiar with what we've been doing with the Recreation Plan. So we did update the Recreation Plan a year early to coordinate with the rest of Alpena County as they were updating theirs as well, so that we could do some joint recreation planning. The Recreation Plan in itself contains an inventory of current City of Alpena recreation resources, as well as public and private resources in the surrounding area. It is a five-year planning document. It identifies the community's goals, objectives, and action items, and the results of the recreation survey that were done earlier, the share also included in the plan. One thing to also note is that this is a living document, and it works in coordination with our master plan, our strategic plans, and our capital improvement planning process. Shared goals for Alpena County have been added as a result of joint planning efforts into the plan. The document was streamlined to reduce redundancy and make it more user-friendly. All goals have been reviewed based on survey respondent feedback and incorporated into the goals, objectives, and action items. In addition, the DNR provides financial assistance to communities through its grant programs. A current DNR-approved community park and recreation plan is required to be eligible for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, and Waterways Grants. Following our multiple reviews and public discussions, we held a public hearing on January 9 at the Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commission recommended adoption of the resolution and recommended adoption by the City of Alpena City Council as well. So included is a recommended motion and the resolution.
The plan is wonderful.
Yeah. Well thought out. I mean, I think that when we showed up at some of those meetings where we were getting survey results and stuff, the participation was fantastic, so, but just the, the work to dig through all of the responses and, and come up with a, you know, very insightful plan is, kudos to you.
Thank you.
Well thought out.
The survey that you included, I, I took part in that. I thought that was genius, to find out what people are using locally and, yeah, some, and a number of people. Pretty good, right?
Yeah, we had very good participation in the survey, which was excellent, and I think it helped that it was across the entire county, as opposed to just doing the city, because you have users across the entire county.
Ready for motion?
Yep.
I move we approve Resolution 2024-01, which adopts the 2024 to 2028 City of Alpena Recreation Plan.
Second.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Motion to.
Okay, now we're up to selection of a candidate to fill the mayoral vacancy for the term ending December 31, 2024. I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. When we were here just two weeks ago, two questions arose. One was, could council appoint somebody to a vacant city council member position prior to filling the mayoral position, with the thought that we would then have an odd number of voters that could break any potential tie? It's my legal position that we cannot do that. We don't have a vacant council member position yet. We will have one when we appoint a mayor, because obviously, the candidates for the mayoral appointment are council members. So under, under 3.7 of the charter, we can't, can't fill that position until one of the two candidates that currently exist are appointed mayor. So that was the answer to the first question. The second question was, okay, what do we do if we end up in the same position that we ended up in two weeks ago? And the charter does provide, under the elections portion of the charter, that if there is a tie in any elective office, that the procedure is to follow state law as to how the tie is when it's broke. So in this case, the way we would break the tie is by following the state statute. The state statute says, is drawn by lot, which means the two candidates that tie are chosen by lot. It doesn't define a particular procedure to draw by lot, other than the, in this case, the city clerk would be the one that would be responsible for drawing that. And it doesn't say put two names in a hat or put two names in a box or, but I think we have a box here that's. Separated mighty nicely, I would say. This is an agenda item, so we're back to where we were a couple of weeks ago, which is the council discussion. At some point in time, I believe one of the members will make a, a motion, and if we have a majority vote for either of the two candidates, then that will fill the mayoral position. And then, depending upon who that is, that may create a vacancy in the Mayor Protem position. Then we have to choose a Mayor Protem as well, and then we would move on to conducting the interviews and statements for the, for the then-vacant council member position. And the intent was to try to do this all now, because we only have 30 days to fill the mayor, and we need to, we need to get up and running fully again. So I'm assuming there are no members, other than the two that threw their hat in the ring last time. I guess if, if Councilmember Walchek or Councilmember Mitchell wanted to throw their hat in the ring, there's nothing that would stop them from throwing their hat in the ring. They could, as we did last, last meeting, they could make whatever spiel they wanted to in terms of their qualifications or why they wanted the position. So I'm assuming either one of you wish to do that this evening.
Thank you.
Also assuming that Mayor Protem Johnson and Councilmember Noah still are interested in the position.
Correct.
Okay. So you guys can have at it and see where we live.
Okay. And I'll start. I have nothing to add to what I said last week, so nothing's changed. I'm available. I have the time. I have the energy to do this. So that's, that's my comment, and we need to move on.
Yeah, council, I feel the same. I, you know, I think I've stated everything that I, you know, put out there last week. I felt that, you know, my leadership ability would suit these council. I feel that I'm suited for the position and can handle any of the responsibilities moving forward as well.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Ladies first.
I move that we appoint Cindy Johnson as mayor.
I will support that.
Point, yeah, it would have to be the, a point to fill the, the vacant term of Mayor Walagore till December 31, 2024.
Councilmember Mitchell?
First, the vote tonight will fill the mayor's seat and move the council and the city forward. Despite the previous vote, the members of this council are always respectful of each other and work hard to serve the citizens. We're all like a family, and as such, we don't always agree. However, we still come together and complete the city's business. The city is lucky to have two qualified candidates to appoint to the mayor's seat. It is possible that there could be another tie vote. However, that would not be good for the council or the city. Therefore, my vote to appoint Mayor Protem Johnson is yes.
Councilmember Noah?
No.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. I just, you know, if I may, before we move on to the next thing, just wanted to say, you know, Danny, I understand and respect your position and that. We are going to move forward. We always have. I think it is best that the four of us were able to. So I've been asked in the past if I've ever regretted throwing my hat into any ring, and the answer is no. I think by myself and Mayor Protem Johnson throwing our hats in the ring, we made that position better, because we gave all of our, what we thought were our best attributes for the position, made us think what we wanted for Alpena. And again, by doing that, I believe it, it pauses all of us to be a little bit better and supports our democracy. One of the things that, I have no regrets doing that. I'm, you know, I want my vote to be, you know, noted as a vote for myself, not a vote against anyone, still a candidate, and I hope that the participation in the fall election is immense. My favorite elections were the ones when I was running against somebody, because I've always said, you know, my greatest growth has always come from being, or talking with those who don't support the position I do. So with that, congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on this board.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, you have to administer the ultimate, or to.
Do you want, where do?
If you don't mind.
I don't mind. I, Cindy Johnson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state?
Of the state.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of mayor?
The duties of the office of mayor.
In and for?
In and for.
The City of Alpena?
The City of Alpena.
County of Alpena?
County of Alpena.
And State of Michigan?
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Right here. Do I have to date it? Uh, no. Thank you.
I think we have to do, Mrs. Mayor.
We're down to selection of Mayor Protem.
Although we have an official vacancy in the Mayor Protem position. It's similar to the mayor position, so any of the remaining council members can throw their hat in the ring if they wish to. You could make a statement if you, if you'd like. But then ultimately, hopefully, a motion will be made, and we'll have a majority vote as to who Mayor Protem should.
I would move that Councilman Noah be appointed to fill the open position of Mayor Protem. I have no doubt that Councilman Noah will use his vast experience to assist the mayor in all aspects of her time in office and represent the city to the best of his ability. Maybe, Danny.
There, there's a motion on the table. Is it okay for some discussion?
If we second it, we can have discussion.
Second.
Okay.
You could certainly discuss it at this point now that it is seconded.
I just have a question. Mike, you're being nominated for this, or a point, it would be an appointment. You're good with that?
Yeah.
You're happy to do this?
Yeah, I will serve in any role that council seems appropriate. And I feel I can serve that position well. So I would probably accept that nomination. Thank you.
And Anna, I request Anna has a question. Do you have a question?
Oh, this is.
And I said a point.
Yeah, is it an appointment?
Yeah.
It is.
So that would be an old.
I'm sorry.
There would be an old. We don't normally do one.
Yeah, we don't do an old.
They just give you a big pay raise.
Anna, and I would request that you call me last because I will go with majority. Call my name last in the vote. Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walcheck?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor Johnson.
Congratulations, both of you.
I'll need a photo of you after.
Okay. Now we're to the statements of statements of candidates for council member vacancies for the term ending December 31st. And Rachel will. Come over there.
All right.
Okay, so I wanted to say thank you to all the candidates that applied for the important position for this or the important appointment for the city of Alpena. And so we sent some instructions to each of the applicants prior to the meeting. And so they will have up to eight minutes total from each applicant to provide statements on the responses to the following questions that we sent to them. How do you feel your experience qualifies you to be a city council member and brings balance and diversity to the full council? Additionally, what skills and qualities, personal and professional, do you have that would make you a good representative of the citizens of Alpena and a good member of the city council team? Please explain. Number two, what do you feel are the three biggest issues currently facing the community? And how would you like to see these issues addressed? Number three, explain your knowledge of the current operations of the city of Alpena and the services provided. Four, how do you perceive the current level of intergovernmental cooperation? Are the intergovernmental council, intergovernmental committees and authorities effectively addressing community-wide issues? And then lastly, we asked if there was anything else that they would like to add that would help the council make their decision. And so then, following each statement, the council members may ask some follow-up questions of the applicants. Once those statements are completed, the council will vote by placing the names of their top two selections on a piece of paper, with the top selection scoring two points and a second scoring one point. The point totals will be tallied by Clerk Soick and myself. And the applicant with the highest point total will be appointed to the city council for a term ending December 31st, 2024. In the event of a tie, it runs the same as we discussed with the mayoral vote just now. And so the tie will be broken by the applicants drawing lots. And those would be, it would be a tie for first place, the highest two point totals. And so then the council appointee will be immediately sworn into the position by Clerk Soick. I'm sorry, we did discuss before that there would be a motion, though, after you vote for the highest point total.
Okay.
And then they'll be sworn in. And so at this time, we're going to have each of the applicants make their statements and we're going in alphabetical order. And we're going to ask that. So Kevin Genter will be first and we'll ask that the other applicants go over to the committee room and I can show you right over there. And then you're welcome to stay after you've made your statement. Okay. Right. So I'll say Kevin comes up and I'll hold on to him.
Good evening.
That's not.
Ever you're ready.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Genter. I know you all know that, but for the rest of the room today, been an Alpena resident for a little over nine years. Wanted to mention I'm privileged to be in the spot and make this presentation to you. Short bit about myself because I think it plays into the whole reason. And justification for why I would be a good person for Alpena City Council. I was born in Detroit, Michigan. I graduated from a Grand Rapids area high school, East Kentwood. I also accomplished a bachelor's science degree in printing management from Ferris when it was still a college. And I'm a father of five, grandfather of four. I've worked at the business end as opposed to the income paper end in the printing industry for over 25 years. Always thought it was kind of cool when I moved here that I go, I think I, we used to buy Fletcher paper for the printing equipment that we had when I worked in Chicago. I did a process of estimating billing, pricing, all sort of middle management processes. So I'm familiar with some business practices. I've worked my passion early on. I found a really real calling with the fire service and did it in a volunteer or paid-on-call position. So not not professional, not not fully paid career. I have about 32-plus years as a paid-on-call volunteer firefighter and about 13 of those years and 13 additional years as a professional full-time firefighter, including two years as a contract firefighter in Iraq. If you didn't overlap any of them, the my service to the fire in the public safety or fire service area is about 54 years with 10 different fire departments. I feel my life experiences, education, living in small towns and large towns, and my work history, both in the business area and public service, give me a unique perspective about ideas of improving life and and making Alpena a better place to live and bring people who don't live here now or are just visiting, have them get a memorable experience here in Alpena. I've invested many hours, although invested sounds kind of strong maybe, but I've been attending quite a few city council meetings, DDA meetings, planning commission meetings, learning a lot about how the city works and projects that are being focused on. Also attending the Alpena Board of Commissioner meetings for approximately the past year. Some of the cities, Dearborn Heights, Dearborn, Wheaton, Illinois, Kentwood, Michigan, Grand Rapids, Walker. Lived on Mackin Island for four years, lived in Chicago, Schaumburg, Illinois, Portage and Alpena. And the sandboxes, I call it, three different military bases in Iraq. I think it gives me a good sense of what these communities were, what they thought was important, buildings, subordnances and and so on. In the question of three biggest issues in my mind, I think number one was housing. The housing here in Alpena is really locked up right now. People are having a hard time getting places to live, whether it's a single-family house or a long-term rental apartment, condo, what have you. There's an issue with affordability. I know there's a recent study that talked about the average home value and Alpena is around 129,000. But the per capita income limit was at 29,000. So there's some things that have to happen maybe to make those, have this thing open up. But everything's more more expensive right now. So I'm sure that adds to the difficulty. I feel the city council could encourage development and building with programs, abatements. I know the city has five or six abatements in the process right now or usable right now. Industrial tax, personal property, obsolete property rehab, some commercial rehab in the neighborhood enterprise zone. I was recently in Grayling and noticed out of nowhere three about 18-unit apartment buildings like popped out of nowhere. And I go, huh, in little in a little Grayling. So something we can do here. And I know there's some available land and places that some of these things could happen. My number two issue was successful resolution toward the conclusion of the water sewer litigation with Alpena Township. After a dozen years, a dozen-plus years of legal wrangling and the ideas that have been put forward just doesn't seem to come to, haven't come to a head. Think it's time to wrap that up with all my benefit of maybe some of the closed closed meetings. And I think maybe some of the, maybe there are a couple of way out of the box creative ideas to bring this to the resolution. But maybe there's something else that needs to happen to wrap this up. Ultimately, I think the Charter Township has has the advantage of water and sewer because of the hard work and planning that the city of Alpena has put into building the system and making that infrastructure available, even to get water to the point that they take it into their system. I don't see the current process of escrow. The current process, the escrow status and the lack of conclusion going on continually, something has to happen. And to wrap that part up, I think the wholesale rate was something that was, needs to be revisited, like a lot of contracts. And some things change. And I kind of see the wholesale rate as being something that is sort of like the animal shelter available to businesses or high-volume users here within the city boundaries. My third issue is I feel pretty strongly about. I think this is something in the area of Alpena business, the Alpena amenities and downtown development. I have high praises for the planning commission and the DDA. And I'm sure there's others that we've seen recent changes and the palatable excitement that comes from things like fresh waves, downtown dollars, the social district, Michigan brown trout and other fishing tournaments, the Culligan Plaza remodel, Freak Performers Flower Weekend and the winter event with ice alscotters that are coming up.
60 seconds.
Okay. I'll go to this. Some of the things I identified with is local leadership development expert Jackie Krawcheck says, be the example. I plan to work on that. Leave the place better than you found it. I see myself as part of the Alpena team, working together for a great Alpena. I plan to ask a lot of questions like why, why not? Or why can we can we try this? Interaction is important with the citizens. I would like to encourage waterfront and lakeshore growth and recreation opportunities. I feel it's important to have responsible and planned growth here in Alpena. Want to be thorough, make educated decisions, do the best for most and do the right thing. And I use words like care, concern, be responsible. Thanks again.
Okay, so we're going to ask questions?
Yes.
Follow up on some of the stuff that you said. And didn't say.
Okay, I have sort of a combined question. You did mention a couple of committees and you've been attending the meetings and so forth. What are you, what committees are you interested in serving on? And connected to that is two-pronged second question. Are there any time conflicts that prevent you from serving on these communities?
I'll go with the easier one first.
Okay.
The time conflicts one, I don't, I don't see one. My full-time schedule, a firefighter at the CRTC and I don't work the typical schedule. I work approximately 24 or 10 24-hour days in a month. So and then I have the flexibility of time off and and so forth. And committees in particular, I mean, my focus on the business business development, maybe something to do with recreation, things that are, I see would be beneficial to make an Alpena that destination place.
Okay. I'm just going to go around. So two, three from me. You said you have, you work 10 24-hour shifts.
Right.
So during those 10 20, 10 24-hour shifts, are you able to leave and come back?
Yes.
You, you, and maybe I misunderstood, but the three biggest issues currently facing us are housing, sewer and water. And you started talking about, you know, planning commission, DDA.
Maybe I wasn't clear. The continued focus of these programs that I really, I really see that's setting us really that that vibe's going, that palatable like excitement. Because the one thing I didn't get to was that I feel a strong downtown is I don't, I don't think most in Alpena have seen what happens in downtowns where the downtown kind of loses its luster. And these programs to bring people downtown is so important.
I don't disagree. And one question that has nothing to do with anything. What was your favorite book that you read this year?
What favorite book did I read? I don't think I could give you that answer.
That's fine. I'm always looking for suggestions.
Kevin, you had mentioned that, you know, you had some, and if you could expand a little bit on leadership, okay? What leadership organizations that you're either involved with where you took a leadership position? Or if there's any, you know, anything within your business that you have leadership position on, and if you could give us a little background on that, please.
Yeah, I think by default, the fire service is a is an automatic leadership builder, especially if you want to progress at all in your career. I mean, by knowing the job, knowing how to work with people within your organization, knowing how to relate to people. I try to be an example. I try, a lot of times I won't necessarily push that, but I'll, I try to lead by example. Like, oh, what, what did you do? And I've always been that, I don't like to be out there in front necessarily, unless I need to. But I'd rather be that person that, oh, I did it like this or I did it the right way or I did the right thing when it came to whatever the situation was. So that that's where I think my my strength is. I mean, when you, when you go to could happen tonight because I'm going back to work after I leave here. If, if heaven forbid, there's a fire later this evening in Alpena Township, which is where I'm working tonight. There's lots of decisions that have to be made. And those are all based on, a lot of, or a lot of those are based on leadership.
One of my favorite questions, we could give you anything, you could be anything that you wanted to be beyond what you're currently doing now. What would that be?
A duck? No. I can remember a question where in an interview I was in about what kind of animal would you be? You know, I think on your feet kind of, kind of question. I'm not sure outside of being a firefighter. It's a, it's a huge passion for me. I took up sailing recently. Often thought about the military in some capacity. But as far as jobs outside of that.
It was interesting you said duck. My question has been the subject of many debates in the city. And the subject is My question has been the subject of many debates in the city and the subject is geese, their mess and how to control them. How would you vote to handle this?
I kind of look at the, well, how about this for a story? I'll speak to the ladies because they voted no on the, on the geese, geese problem. So not necessarily this is the way I'm leaning, I'm just saying, I spent a honeymoon in Sault Ste Marie and we visited a park and the park, you could not take a step without stepping in it because the park was hugely populated with geese. I understand there's, I think it's a little bit outside of the be kind to animals thing because at some point there has to be some regulation or some consideration about what's too much and and what's an acceptable, fair, you know, it doesn't have to be indiscriminate. But let's just kill all of them. Maybe there's a limit, maybe there's, it's only going to be every other year or I know something to that effect was adopted where it could be considered. But I mean, I would, I would be in favor of some calling the herd, if you will. But thoughtful people can come to a conclusion about what's enough and what's the proper way to take care of it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And you're more than welcome to stay in the room now.
Sure, thank you.
By the way, I was up in Sault Ste Marie for twenty-one years, so I know exactly what you talked about. Golf course, Addy Osbourne, I campgrounds, the football field for the high school. It was, it was all over the place.
Good evening, Aaron.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Erin Kane. I'm not sure if you want me to go in order, but I guess it is as a preliminary matter, I'm good to start out with, with the first question. I think that's a great question. So how do you feel your experience qualifies you to be a city council member and brings balance and diversity to the full council? Well, I am young, I am female, I'm an attorney, I'm a private business owner, I am self-built. My father is the one who has the practice that I took over, but I had to attain a doctorate degree in order to do that with little help from him economically, which I jab him for a lot. But with that, you know, I'm a hard worker. I, I went to law school when I was thirty. I worked in politics before. I worked, I started out working for Peter Patalia's campaign, late, late Peter Patalia in 2010, won his election. He had ran before and lost, but then he ran again. He ran against an incumbent, which is usually pretty tough, but he ran again in 2010 and he won. And so I went to work for him in Lansing. I worked for him down in Lansing for two years and I knew I wasn't going to grow in that, in his office. So I went over to John Mullenar's office, who was our state senator at the time. And I worked for him until he put in his bid for Congress. So and I was actually asked if I wanted to continue working for him in his congressional role, which I could have done, moved to DC or have a local, work in one of his local offices, but I've always wanted to represent and work for somebody who represented Alpena. So I declined and instead I went and joined Beneshek's campaign, Dr. Dan Beneshek, worked on his campaign in 2014, was successful in getting him elected. Also offered a position in DC, declined because again, my goal is always to support and work for the constituents of Alpena. That's always been at the core of my heart. And so instead I worked for, who replaced John Mullenar, Senator Jim Thomas, also our former state senator. So I worked for him for a couple of years until I decided to take the plunge and finally go to law school because I kept saying to my father, I don't know what I want to do. You know, I'm not happy working for somebody else. I want to work for myself. I want to be my own business owner. I work better under my own pressure, not pressure of an employer. And so I went to law school at the age of thirty. Brought me back here is my father saying, come back here and take over my firm. And I said, yes, absolutely, because the daunting task of starting up your own firm downstate and the cutthroat way that the legal system works down there was not appealing to me whatsoever. So came back here and anyway, so enough about that. That's what brought me here. I believe that's what qualifies me for this position, not only because I have continuously worked for people who represent the constituents of Alpena, but now that I have my own practice and it's a sound practice and it's, I've built it to, well, I haven't built it, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said, my father built it, but we have continued to maintain the practice and, and now that it's stable, for me at least, I want to delve into working more with local politics because I believe that politics is local, always local. And that's why at the heart of everything, I've always been in Alpena, no matter who I worked for. And now I'm in Alpena physically after being in Lansing for fourteen years and I'm very happy to have this opportunity to now represent the constituents of Alpena. So that I believe gives me a lot of diversity to the council as I'm not sure what the other people who are here who are applying for it have in terms of their experience, but I've always been one who has represented constituents of this area and I'm proud of that and I want to continue in that role. So people who know me personally know that I am a go-getter, I'm an independent thinker, I'm an analytical thinker. As being a lawyer, that's just, you have to be. I can, I understand, you know, the same devil's advocate, I have to, I represent people with one argument, I represent people with another argument. And I professionally, I have, I have kind of reputation of being a little bit of a bulldog, but I can also be a quail bear. So as a balanced team member, I really appreciate engaging in constructive dialogue about opinions of different policies. I'm not, I am, I have my own beliefs, my own ideology, but I know this is a nonpartisan position and I respect that wholeheartedly because I don't just vote party lines. I just presented who I worked for in the past so clearly, you know, there's an R at the end of my name, but I don't, that's not how I approach things. I just, that alone, I really like the fact that this is not a partisan position because I'm not going to vote along those lines. I'm going to vote what's best for Alpena. And on that note, I am not afraid to talk to people. I talk all the time. I'm surprised my tongue isn't as big as my leg. It's the most active muscle in my body and I'm used to talking to constituents because that's what I did when working for all of the representatives and senators and congressmen that I just told you about. I was the person that the people called to voice a complaint or have an idea or need help with something. So I'm used to working with people and now I do that all day, every day. So moving on, the three biggest issues that are facing the community right now, I mean, that's a really loaded question. There's a lot of things going on with the community right now, a lot of things that are really good that I, I'm happy to see moving forward. We had the report from MEDC that just hearing that and how this place has grown is just phenomenal. I mean, I moved away from here in 2006. When I came back in 2018, it was like a whole new world. It's just, I couldn't even recognize it. And now I can't recognize it even when I drive down thirty-two, I'd like to see more on the south side and I'm happy to see that there's going to be some development there. But I think short-term rentals is, and the availability of housing is a big issue in this area. I think that that's obvious to everybody who's here. The good thing about, I know the short-term rental has been presented to the board from the Planning Commission. And the good thing about that is I will not have to abstain from that vote. I don't have any conflicts of interest. I am not dating anybody who has a short-term rental. I'm not married to anyone who has a short-term rental. I'm not, I have no family members who have short-term rentals. So and I can have, I can look at that and analyze what's best for the constituents of this, of this area or just the residents in general, not just the constituents and what's best for Alpena in general. So I also think that blight is an issue. There's some unused properties in this area that I'm happy to hear that there's grants available for that to, for something to be built there. But I know that there's an issue, I was talking it over with some people before this meeting and I represent Long Rapids Township as their attorney and they have similar issues with their blight ordinance, but enforcing it, it doesn't have any teeth. And I think that that's an issue that's been presented before this board. And so that's something that I think can be looked at and also just utilizing the empty spaces in this area. And then third, I'm, I'm a huge boat fan. I love harbors. I grew up sailing. My parents started me sailing when I was four and Alpena Harbor was, was so different when I was a child and it was a destination harbor. And now it doesn't seem to be, it's getting better. I know there's new docks that were built, but I would just like to see more, you know, put into that. I think that bringing in more tourism through boating would be a really great thing for this area. Also, just as an aside, you know, I know that there's, there's a lot of people who own pets in this area and I just really think it'd be cool, just, I know this isn't an issue affecting Alpena, but I think it'd just be really cool to have more dog waste, put things posted up throughout the city, you know, just for people who are walking their dogs and just, I just have so many ideas, but I know that that's not my position as a council member, which leads me into the third question that you had asked. So.
Sixty more seconds.
Are you serious? I said I was going to take the whole eight minutes.
Same.
Okay, my knowledge of current operations of Alpena and city services provided. Clearly, you know, it's a policymaking body. You have the intergovernmental committees and boards that kind of gauge what issues are presented and then they're presented to the board. The board makes the decision, they negotiate and improve the budget, pretty much put the final stamp on things that are presented from the respective Planning Commission, DDA, harbor, you know, et cetera. How far am I, am I good?
You've got thirty-five more.
Yes. Okay, perceived current governmental, intergovernmental cooperation committees, authorities, et cetera. I mean, not having, not being on any of these intergovernmental committees and boards, I, I'm going to be honest, I don't, I can't give a solid answer. But just based on what I've seen with people who've reported, like the MEDC and the Humane Society and things like that, it seems like their governmental and departmental communication is solid and I think that that's effective for any form of government to be efficient and move forward, doing the best for the residents of Alpena. Anything else you should know that would help you make the decision? I think based on what I've seen, all four candidates, all three other candidates are are going to be great candidates. If you pick me, great. If you don't, that's, you know, it's your choice, but I, I have the time, I have the skills, I am an independent thinker and I love Alpena. And I think that my history of what I've done working and what I'm trying to do, which is get more involved in my local government and community will show that I am a true opinion at heart. This is just something that I've always wanted to do. So thank you.
Because we're gonna.
Oh, yeah, that's right. All up questions.
Want to go in the same order?
Well, I'm not sure that you didn't already answer these, Erin, so I'll, I'll just put it for, you said you mentioned you knew a couple of committees. What would you be interested in working on with in terms of committees?
City. Okay, so the harbor advisory committee, because you know, the harbor is one of the things I'd like to see improved within the city. The DDA, I think would be really fun. Planning Commission, as I know there potentially might be a vacancy. Yeah, that, the historic district committee, I really think that'd be cool because I think I just seeing, you know, scrolling through Facebook, it's becoming really popular now, which is really neat and I love it, that people are getting more involved in our history, you know, want to know, oh, this old house, when was it built or this building was built? And I just think, and the Alpena is becoming more of a tourist destination and I think exploiting that and making that part of our, our draw for people would be great. So those four off the top of my head.
Okay, and you also mentioned you have the time. Do you have any kind of time conflicts that might interfere with your participation?
So Judge Black determines my day and Judge Frawley and Judge Stone, but between the hours of eight-thirty and four-thirty, you know, obviously I, I am not able to, because those are the hours of court, but I am my own business owner. I own my own business, I make my own hours and I work in a position where I eat what I kill essentially. So if I wanted to work for two hours a day and not making any money, I could do that or I can make as much money as comes in with the people who want to hire me. So I am my own boss, so that's what I mean. And I, I hate showing up disorganized, not knowing what I'm going to say. I mean, going into court, you have to be on all the time. And with that, I always do my homework. I know what's going to be presented or I try to think what's going to be presented by the opposing council. And likewise, coming to these meetings, I, even if it's seventy-plus pages of reading, that's all I do is read, read and talk all the time. That's all I do. I don't even enjoy reading at night anymore for any fiction because that's all I do is read. So that's what I mean, I have the time, so I will make the time.
Okay, you were pretty thorough on your answers to our question, so I don't have a lot for you, but what is your opinion on short-term rentals?
Well, so I understand why you're asking that question. I think as, as if I am to be appointed and then eventually if I maintain the position as an elected official, my opinion will be developed by what I think Alpena needs and the residents and me communicating with them. And I believe that outreach is number one in being an elected official. What the, what our residents need, what they feel and then countering that with me. I, I understand, I had a conversation with Mr. Walegora just the other day because I wanted to gauge, you know, hey, what's, what are the issues that have been presented? You know, I want to hit the ground running if I am selected and that came up and I knew that was an issue because I came to a couple of board meetings on that anyway. And it's tough because you have a constitutional element there. You know, you can't really deprive people of their right to do what they want with their property. So to balance that with the lack of housing is tough, but I like what was done. I think it's fair. You kind of did like a, not a Venn diagram, but you, you made it so that a certain circumference of the area of Alpena cannot have, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the medical ordinance. I know that the Planning Commission has had people vet that issue and present it to the board. Whether there's a cap, whether there's a waiting list, whether you just say no more short-term rentals in Alpena City and only have it expand out into the county, I think that might be something that's fair. But again, you know, I'm open to ideas and I think as a role of a council member, it's more the ideas that you learn from your constituents and from the data. And then you can digest that and then make the appropriate decision based on, you know, what you believe and what's best for the area. Sorry, that's a really long-winded answer, but.
Okay, it was a great answer.
Okay.
That you didn't pick a side because it takes a lot for us to decide to. So I'm just going to ask you, and I'm asking everyone this question, what was your favorite book to read this year?
This year? Well, this year I.
Twenty twenty-three, let's go twenty twenty-three.
So, so the Diana Gabalden series. My grandmother, she died the year I went to law school in 2016 and she got my entire family started on it. And when I started law school, that's all I did was read. And then after law school, that's all I do is read. And so I stopped at the fifth book and so I'm reading it right now. It's called The Fiery Cross.
Perfect, thank you.
It's a historical fiction incorporating nonfiction elements of various wars in Scotland and, and the Revolutionary War. So I love it.
The, can you provide the council examples of leadership training or leadership of any organization that you have to kind of give us an idea of areas that you've led or something that you've led?
Well, I don't have any like training per se, like I don't have any certificates or anything like that, but in working on the various campaigns, I was the campaign manager, so I had employees underneath me, so I had to demonstrate leadership. I had to get people involved and wanting to work for the state representative or the congressman or the senator that I was working for. And as you probably have noticed, it's hard to get people to volunteer. So you have to really be strong, a strong advocate for what you're doing and then find the people that share that, share that desire and goal with you and then keep them motivated. So, and that takes leading them. And when it comes to law school, I was on the Jessup International Court Team and I was the team leader for the four of us that were there. We compete in Chicago and I actually won top ten oralist out of a hundred and ten oralists in that competition. And I feel like I led my team that way. If you're interested in what that is, look it up. It's actually a really cool competition, very nerve-wracking. Being a lawyer, people look to me every day for what should I do? Should I do this? Should I do that? I mean, I feel like when I get home, I don't even know how to answer my own questions. Like what do I want for dinner? I don't know, I don't want to make a decision, you know, because every day I'm just guiding people and helping them with their lives. So that takes leadership and then also operating and owning my own business now, I'm having taken it over from my father, you know, it takes leadership and, and management. So I hope that answered your question.
Second question that I have is, if you could be anything beyond your current position, anything in the world, you know, what would that be? To give you an example, my answer would be probably a stand-up comic. I do that a little bit, you know, and so that's just one of the things, but I determined early on too, I could make a good living at it, so.
I think you're, I think you're, drum roll.
What would yours be?
Hospitality management.
Hospitality management.
You know why? Because with what I do for a career now and what I did before as constituent relations for the various state reps that I worked for and senators, most of the time when I said people call, they don't call to say, you're doing a great job. Tell Representative Patalia or Senator Mullenar or Senator Thomas, thank you. It was to complain. And so that's what you get all the time. And that's fine, that's what I'm there for. And now as an attorney, no one comes into my office in a good mood. I mean, even when they come in for a for a state planning, they're talking about dying, you know, even if they're coming in for a step-parent adoption, it's like, oh, that's a great thing, you know, because the absent parent is, but that's sad, because now you're talking about an absent, you know, so there's really, so hospitality management would be fun, I always thought, because everyone who's on vacation is usually smiling and having a good time. I mean, that's, yeah.
Good answer. I should have been there. As a citizen of the city of Alpena, what is your knowledge of the disagreement between the city and township concerning the water rates and court action?
I know that there's court currently scheduled for April. I believe that there's already been an attempt at mediation on both sides. It was ordered by the Court of Appeals to do mediation, and then again, when another appeal to Michigan Supreme Court, it was ordered mediation, and I believe that there wasn't a whole lot of conversations between the city and the township. That's just based on what I've read and, and everything. So the fact that now it's before the courts kind of takes it out of the hands of the council, so I, I would just defer to the courts and let the justice system do what the justice system does, and make the determination of what's right and abstain from an opinion otherwise.
Is that?
That would be it.
Okay. Erin, you're more than happy to stay in the room now, and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. Are you ready?
We are ready.
I'm going to take all of the eight minutes. All set? Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council members and residents, my name is Christopher Moses. I live at three oh six Lockwood Street, where I've resided for four years, and I am a retired Class One freight locomotive engineer currently serving on the City of Alpena Planning and Zoning Commission. I am sixty-one years old. For three decades, I've been a citizen servant to more than a dozen organizations, boards and committees in the communities where I've lived and worked. I received training in responsible media communication, open meeting laws, and Robert's Rules of Order through my citizen service and through the NCAA, the Lansing City Government, and the railroad. In nineteen ninety-seven, I was still a Lansing City Government employee and responsible for producing all printed and bound material for all departments and divisions in the city government. It was then I spoke in front of the Lansing City Council with two requests on behalf of the printing shop during the Management Services Department portion of the budget hearing. One was a budget increase request, and the second was a request for a new offset printing press. With the total support of my department head, we were successful in both requests. The one full year of research and preparation leading up to the city council proposals confirmed to me that city workers must jump through hoops of fire in order to get more money for anything. They must have the patience of a saint, and so it's incumbent upon the municipal board to be responsive and willing to provide what is necessary with the proper oversight. With the core of our maritime city in history remaining largely intact, forces both inside and outside of the city are seeking to change it. The most recent example is the proposed homeless warming shelter that will eventually become a homeless residential shelter. When our time comes to deal with this, it will be critical to understand there are two kinds of homeless people, the local homeless and the transient homeless. We are duty-bound to helping only the local homeless, and all of our resources in that effort must be focused on them. Word travels fast among the homeless, and shelters are magnets for transient homeless who will come here from places you cannot even imagine at this moment. It's a script being replayed hundreds of times a day in towns like Alpena all across this country, but we do not have to accept it. Urban decay and blight always comes in right behind the waves of transience. In America, all people are guaranteed equal opportunity, but not an equal outcome. Likewise, the Bible tells us to turn the other cheek and to be our brother's keeper. Those truths, however, do not require our total surrender to the worst of human nature. Rather, we are charged with helping those who are willing to help themselves. Local social service workers are generally good-hearted people, whereas leaders behind the social service organizations and NGOs generally are not. They don't care about your residents, and they seek change by any means necessary, first through emotion, then by force. I urge you to go online tonight and read the story headlined, quote, "Small Wisconsin Towns Police Chief Pens Letter Begging Biden for Help After Flood of Immigrants", unquote. It was published January fifth, twenty twenty-four. In summary, Whitewater, Wisconsin, population fifteen thousand one five, woke up one day to find a thousand non-English-speaking homeless people had been dumped into their town without notice and without recourse. To that end, please also go to the detroitnews.com website and read the article headlined, quote, "As Homeless People Become More Visible, Michigan and Other States Take a Tougher Line", unquote, dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-four. In summary, local residents are inundating government switchboards and crowding municipal meetings across the nation, demanding action on the transient homeless. As citizen servants, we must always strive to stay out of trouble with residents. In my opinion, there are three critical services of equal importance that will help us to achieve that goal: Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department. We must keep those departments funded, trained, staffed, and equipped, because when things get tough, there's no time for playing catch-up before issues reach critical mass. Public Works, replace the wastewater treatment plant pumps if necessary. Keep the toilets flushing and the water running. Likewise, repair the streets, clear the snow, and keep the lights on. Fire Department needs to protect our future and our history. The current ladder truck saved our historical theater recently, and what about future needs? New and bigger buildings are coming, and what about electrical vehicle fires? They require specialized training and equipment. Are we ready for the future? Police Department, that's an easy one, but if you need more information on that, please refer to the previous articles that I mentioned above. In March twenty twenty, our nation was forever changed. Historic numbers of people are now on the move and relocating. Half of those people engage in commerce and are active in their community as business owners, homeowners, and renters. They're tired of conditions they've been forced to live in, and they will come here. Problem is, we have a housing shortage, but this group, who could not only stabilize our local population, but they could also be a catalyst for a once-in-a-lifetime population spurt, they are our best chance to expand our business and residential revenue base. Finally, the daily operation of a city government is an all-hands-on-deck collaborative effort to fund, maintain, and if possible, grow the city government. Tough issues and difficult discussions often result in hard negotiations, so board members must be cool under fire. There is never room for grudges, threats, or personal attacks. Likewise, a successful functioning city government requires mature adults who take citizen service seriously by attending regular meetings and leaving any personal pride, personal ambition, or animosity at the door. Whenever our republic has been in trouble, it has always been the citizen servants from towns like Alpena who come together to save this nation's soul. Like it or not, we are all in this together. To that end, I am encouraged to see more young people serving on the various boards and commissions in Alpena, but we need more. The future is theirs, and servants like me are only placeholders until they are ready. In closing, speaking only for myself, I have never expected nor have I accepted compensation for any citizen service other than a regular and approved expense reimbursement. If chosen, I respectfully decline any compensation for service and ask that it either be returned to the city budget or donated to a local charity in the name of the Alpena City Government. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to ask you a few questions.
Thank you.
If someone had to add some other questions we have been asking. So I'm gonna start with Carol.
Thank you. All right, so this two-pronged question. You, you've mentioned a number of committees that are active here in Alpena connected to city council. Which of those committees might you be interested in serving on?
I've served in a variety of capacities, and I would serve basically anywhere I'm needed. I would say, though, however, councilwoman, that I'm coming to the end of my time. I've been in, I've been in public service and in volunteer activities for the better part of thirty years, and I'm retired now, and in the next couple of years, I'm hoping to spend a little more time doing something else. And so I thought that a one-year term here would help me to bring all of my collective experience together and to be the best servant I can be for that short time, and then I hope to go golfing and fishing.
So that segues very nicely into the second prong of this question, and, and that has to do with time. Is there anything timewise that might interfere with your ability to serve on committees or council?
Absolutely not. I live alone. My children are all grown and gone and live a far distance from here. I am retired, and my time is my own.
Thank you. Okay, Christopher, I'm up, and thank you for coming this evening. But can you just quickly tell me the three biggest issues that you think face, currently face the city of Alpena?
The housing shortage, the coming homeless issue, and funding our critical services. Those, to me, are an issue all the time.
And one question, and I've asked this of everyone. What was your favorite book to read in twenty twenty-three?
To be honest with you, I don't know that I read an entire book. I spend more time reading current events, and pretty well-versed about what's happening in the world and in the city these days. Yeah, yeah. Used to be an avid reader, not so much anymore.
Reading is fundamental.
Yes. Thank my mother for that. She taught me to read at a very young age.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, thank you, Councilman.
I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions on, on leadership. Can you give us the council some ideas of things that you've done in your past or organizations that you've led, just to kind of give us, or any training that you've had in leadership?
Yes. I have served on Church Finance Committee. My church, I served as a, on the men's club at my church. I've also been the chairman of the board for our Kix Youth Football League, which is in Owasso, Perry, Corona, over at LC down in the Lansing area. I was on that board for three years. I was also on the, on the Little League Board in Perry, Michigan, and was also a coach and official there for six years until all my kids were finished. I've also been a shop steward, and, boy, I left my list at home. I got a lot of them. Spent a lot of years. Mostly church activities, mostly sports activities. I did, as I said, I did the one term as the chairman of the youth committee, and now, of course, I serve on the City of Alpena Planning and Zoning Commission.
And then the other question I have is, if council could grant onto you to be anything that you want it to be, beyond what you're currently doing, you know, for instance, I gave the example last time that, you know, my ultimate dream job would be stand-up comic, you know? I know, everybody gets a laugh out of that, so I think it's working.
It's working.
Who are you? What would that be?
A retiree who plays golf and goes fishing. I love my public service. I love my service as a citizen servant, and I would not go back to work at this point. I would basically, my dream job would be possibly to sit up there on the dais and to take my thirty-five years of service, put it all into a nutshell, and finish it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My question's been a subject of many debates in the city. The subject is geese, their mess, and how to control them. How would you vote to handle this?
Get rid of them. As far as the geese go and the mess, I run into them all the time on the walking trail in the summer here along the river. I do hear the shots every now and then. I don't know what that is from my house on Lockwood. I don't know if that's to chase off the geese or the birds or what, but I hear a lot of that. I think you're gonna have to find a way to get the DNR involved, and they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to take a big hand in helping us to get rid of that problem. And because anything you do is gonna have to go through them anyway, if you're gonna be dealing with wildlife, you're gonna have to deal with them. So I think that's probably gonna be your best option.
As a citizen of the city of Alpena, what is your knowledge of the disagreement between the city and the township concerning the water rates and court action?
I have read a little bit about it. I have not read all of the minutes, but I know that there is a water war going on and that there is a court case. That's all I can tell you at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
I will. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. How are you?
Ted, how are you?
You're fine. So Bill's gonna start the timer, and you have eight minutes to go through, and then we'll ask questions. Okay?
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, City Council members. I first want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the vacancy on city council. There are many important qualities of a future city council member and what they could embody to diversify and balance the current council. I believe I have many qualities that, if chosen, would benefit this council. The first is formal training and graduate studies in leadership in related fields. My studies and trainings have afforded me the opportunity to learn how to work on collaborative projects and diverse teams. I've been taught how to effectively communicate, including listening and meaningful discussion, find solutions in the midst of tension and disagreement, and how to empower others to work towards a common goal and vision. This has translated well into my career in education, where I serve as an administrator to multiple programs across four school districts and three counties. I've learned how to build a professional relationship with leaders whose buildings or districts might have difference in difference needs than the next. Additional qualities I embody are flexibility and decision-making. In my career, I have supervised our general ed department as well as various special ed programs, including building systemic structures around instruction and behavior, installing data review practices, forming a district improvement team for our region, and aligning practices with local policy and federal and state legislation. With a wide range of topics and focal areas over the years, I've been able to pivot and follow procedures to maintain the programmatic growth and development of these programs and departments. I would also bring diversity to the council. When I ran for city council in the last election, the media noted that I was one of the younger individuals to run for council in some time. I'm also historically one of the youngest seated administrators at my place of employment. Representation of different age groups is crucial in council. My age and experience provides me with insights of an individual who is in their early to mid part of their career, raising children, and participating in the community as a family unit. This would represent a large number of Alpena citizens who are at that stage of their life as well, and who are looking for an individual to represent them in city government. Additionally, I grew up in Alpena, like some of you, however, I've also lived and worked in cities in Michigan as well as other states. This brings unique perspectives on quality of life in other areas of the country, and I elected to return to Alpena, and in doing so, would draw upon these experiences to benefit the community. Every community has their share of issues that need to be addressed, and I believe some of Alpena's issues currently are related to housing, workforce, and economic development of current structures. In regards to housing, Alpena is making some positive strides. The Alpena Housing Task Force was formed in twenty twenty-two with a wide representation of our local government and partnering agencies such as NEMCA, United Weight, and Habitat for Humanity. The housing needs assessment that was completed last spring reflected an aging population of our region, and it noted that there is insufficient housing in the price range of one hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. I would like to look, the task force to continue to move forward on the preliminary recommendations as outlined in the needs assessment and continue current practices practices that the city is involved in with landlords, such as routine rental inspections to ensure safe places to live for citizens. I would also like to see an increase in education to landlords on programs like payment assistance for those who are eligible. Workforce was the second area that I identified. And in the same housing needs assessment, it mentioned increased stability in some job areas with a wide variety of unskilled and skilled laborers. However, healthcare and education were still an area of need, and healthcare and education are two of our largest workforces and employers in our region. So I'd like to see employers work alongside the Chamber or Visitors Bureau to further tailor a portrait of life in Alpena to attract qualified candidates. This, paired with the work on affordable housing, would provide the necessary components for those seeking employment in Alpena. Third mention was economic development of current structures. Alpena has many buildings, some of which stand vacant. Where appropriate, I support the buildings that are in disrepair to be torn down to reduce play and to provide opportunity for future development. For buildings that are structurally sound but vacant, I would like to see further discussion on development of these sites to motivate owners to use or rent these facilities to increase meaningful use and opportunity for businesses in our city. The city of Alpena's current structure and services first begins with a mayor and members of city council that are elected by the voters of Alpena. The city council appoints a city manager, a city assessor, a city attorney, and the city clerk. The city is responsible for city fire and police departments, including identification of a fire chief and police chief. The planning, development, and zoning director ensures enforcement of building codes and zone ordinances. And finally, the city engineer oversees a department which includes services such as sewer and water utility, the marina, the Department of Public Works, who oversees maintenance of repairs on streets, parks, city buildings, et cetera. Alpena is fortunate to have an intergovernmental council that's comprised of elected officials from the city, all of our townships, and the county of Alpena. The purpose of the committee is to promote cooperative efforts and increase constructive discussions as it relates to agenda items. It's no secret that there's been major disagreements between the city and the township on the water and sewer rates. And my hope is that as the city works towards a positive resolve in this issue, it does not mar the progress that can be made in these intergovernmental council and committee meetings. The elected officials represented their constituents have a task to accomplish. And with goals on topics such as roads, recycling, public safety, and recreation, I see the opportunity to further strengthen these relationships, noting that each entity is stronger when they work together. Lastly, I want to share that I take the opportunity for leadership to heart. I ran in the last city council election and grew as a result of the process. The voters chose two city council members who sit before me today have done a great job representing our community. I missed earning a seat by just under 100 votes. Some might be discouraged by this, but I chose to lean into the community. I was encouraged to apply for and was appointed to the planning commission, which I've served on for two years. I have been serving on the goose management committee for the city of Alpena. I continue to serve in leadership roles on the boards of the Huron Humane Society and the Buster Museum. And I serve on the board at Thunder Bay Theater. When I had to step away for work, they asked me to return to the board. My service on this board are pretty significant projects, like writing grants for the Humane Society to cover some of the costs that were discussed today, restoration to the theater that has suffered two fires and a larceny in the past two and a half years, and the large exhibit work that we're doing at the Buster Museum to keep our museum a focal point in the community. I was appointed as president of our National Alliance for Mental Illness affiliate for Northeast Michigan. I helped formalize and serve as the vice president for the Thunder Bay Film Society. And I was recently appointed the vice commodore at the Alpena Yacht Club. I work in a service profession where I have the opportunity to interact with individuals of all ages, from infants and toddlers all the way to parents and grandparents. I'm in their homes. I'm at the playgroups. I'm working with them as they pick up their kids from school. My family owns small businesses rooted in the spirit of giving back to the city and its people. I believe in being a visible, constant presence in your community. In a former time, I wanted to be a writer. And nothing sums up my passion for this work like a quote from George Bernard Shaw, who states, "I am of the opinion that life belongs to the whole community. And as long as I live, it's my privilege to do for it what I can. Life is no brief candle for me. It's a sort of splendid torch, which I've got to hold on for a moment, and I want to make burn as rightly as possible before handing it on to further generations." Thank you for your time.
Okay, Ashley, I notice have quite a bit of knowledge of committees that city council members serve on. So I'm just going to segue into this next question. Are there any time conflicts you might have that would prevent you from serving on council committees?
So I would make sure that it would not be a conflict. I do currently serve on the planning commission. So I would, you know, need to step away from that work to make sure that I was available. But other than that, I would not have any conflicts.
Thank you.
That was, oh, that was it. Okay.
Sorry. I thought you had busy writing.
Sorry. Okay, it's my turn. You were really thorough. I appreciate that. So I'm just going to ask you the one question that I ask everyone is what was your favorite book to read in 2023?
Well, let me think. I really, we read as a family at night with my boys. And they're 10 and 12. The oldest just turned 12. And so I read to them books that it meant a lot to me in childhood and especially as they grow, which ones are most applicable. So we recently read about, I try to like read like award-winning Newberry Caldecat winners. And so we read Isle of the Blue Dolphin, which is about a young Inuit girl who is left by her tribe and has to survive on the island. And it talks about how important community is and perseverance and resiliency and just incorporating those components into their world between reading Diary of a Wimpy Kid books. So that's probably the most important book we've read.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think that, and I think Council will agree, some of the questions that I've been asking, I believe you've answered within your statement about leadership.
Yes.
And then the other question I've been asking is what would you be if you could be anything in the world? And I believe your answer was a writer. Would that be correct?
Yeah, I think there's been different points in my life that I thought I was going to do different professions. And what I know about my path is it's never going to be a straight narrow, you know? And life is just too comical to think that you can just plan it all out and it will unfold that way. But yes, creativity and passion drive me. I have, you know, I like the arts. I like service. And you can see that in my career field that I chose. But any, any opportunity where I can express myself and share with others is important to me.
That was a question.
Thank you.
Well, we don't have to worry about talking about geese, do we? As a citizen of the city of Alpena, what is your knowledge of the disagreement between the city and the township concerning the water rates and court action?
I'm going to say it's not as in-depth as some of you in front of me. I do know that there's, they're currently at the Court of Appeals regarding the, the rate disagreement, where the city felt like the township wasn't paying their appropriate rate for water and sewage. And beyond that, I know that the city had made a stance that they're working, they want to work towards a positive resolve on this. And that's, that's the depth of it.
And Cindy, mine is it.
Okay, so you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Do what we.
One of the toughest decisions of the year.
Yeah, after tonight's, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all. I mean, your statements here and information were phenomenal. I mean, it is going to be probably one of the most incredible intuitions that I'll ever have to make, you know, sitting here. It's always so tough trying to make an appointment. And I encourage every one of you, if you're interested in continuing on, we have an election coming up in the fall. You know, I've already announced that I'm not going to seek election. There will be, you know, open here. And I encourage you, not, at least please consider running for that position.
Okay, are you ready for us to do? Can we take a five-minute recess while they do this? Let's take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back. Can I have a motion?
I would, we'd take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Okay.
You can't third guess.
Turn the clock.
I'm sure we've been sitting here.
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Proton Noah.
Yes. I'm like, who, what?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson. And Councilor Richard.
Looks like it all got worked out.
You standing ready? I have mine.
Congratulations.
Both of Sammy and Mike.
If I could have had you both, I would have had you both.
You couldn't. That's the problem.
That's okay. It's all right.
That's why I said, I don't.
And I'm glad. I'm just going to throw my hat in the air. But I did. No, I don't think so, because.
No, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we could do more recesses brought in.
You by who?
No, I should be able to fulfill that. That's, that's why it was a great question and why I wanted, you know, it's good. Yours is how much time these people, you know, and because, but you know, you know, it's tough at times. If you apply something for myself to develop.
I know when I. Nothing to jury. You know what you mean.
That's why, you know, it's so funny because I get the question all the time. It's like, well, you know, you, so I made a promise when I got on that it was going to be three terms. And that's going to be, and I have encouraged everybody here to, you could block new people. Good ideas.
And I, you're right, we need to stand in line.
Much as, I love the job, I'm doing it. I am. I keep my promise to myself.
And to your wife.
I took your vote.
I'm sorry.